Seven, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance and the flag is over here in the corner.
Aye.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, an agenda item is approval or amendments to the meeting agenda. Are there any amendments?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we need to remove eight point one, which is the budget number discussion that needs to be removed.
Okay, eight point one was removed. Any other?
We also need to make the changes to the consent agenda.
Oh, yes, you're right. We also need to remove nine point one from the consent agenda. Thank you for reminding me of that.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yes, we need a motion to approve.
Only a motion that we remove eight point one for our business and nine point one for consent agenda.
Alright, motion's been made and seconded to remove eight point one and nine point one from the agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Alright, so, regular meeting minutes approval for March ten.
I'm going to accept the amendments as presented.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve meeting minutes for March ten after presented in agenda. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Alright, motion carries.
Correspondents. Yes, Mr. Chair, what you see in correspondence, there's a letter of thank you and to Collins and the Don Trust Fund for their pledge of fifty thousand dollars towards our big middle school Northland seismic retrofit project. And we tried to expand upon that a little bit to kind of put that in perspective about all the things that have happened to that building and how important that fifty thousand dollar donation from Collins was to the district and meaning behind it. So, just for a review.
Okay, thank you. Public comment? A public comment? Okay, what are the items?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have two people here tonight to present our healthy teens survey. In your packet you should see some summary data and notes. And so at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Debbie Epley as one of our guests tonight and Lonnie Chavet. Ladies, cheers.
In the packet you'll notice some data that we put together. And Lonnie had asked me, could we work on some trends? Because I think, Sean, in the past, maybe you've done each survey individually. And I know, Sean, I always appreciate you doing it and working with both your admin and your school board because not all the schools in the county do that, and I think it's really important. But maybe it's just because of my job that I try to do the trends and look at how it goes. From my old marketing background, it used to mean a lot more to me. When I see ups and downs, I'm not so sure of them as I've been with other data that I've worked with over my career in different fields.
And Debbie, it's probably my fault that I forgot to introduce what your job is. If you would mind commenting on that.
Okay, I'm the Lake County Certified Prevention Specialist. And just so that you folks know, the state of Oregon requires that every county and every tribe in Oregon have a certified prevention specialist. It's a requirement, takes about two years to get the certification. And now I'm in my eighth year of doing this. So I understand a lot more than I did eight years ago. But what we try to do is use the trends, I try to use the trends, to see maybe if we're doing some good things or if we're doing things that are addressing what our issues and problems are. One of the things that I always try to share with our students, we are in our eighth year of having volunteer prevention groups with all of our middle school and high school students and all of our school districts in Lake County. And some of the members have been in it six and five years. So I like that the kids volunteer at their own time and they do it. And we try to teach them healthy information so that you make healthy choices. Just so that you know, the two issues that are the biggest issues about drugs and alcohol, most people don't identify that alcohol is a drug. Underage drinking is the number one problem in this county, in this community, in the United States, and in pretty much the world. And unfortunately, people don't understand how it affects the undeveloped brain and it affects people for the rest of their life. The earlier they start drinking, the more likely they are to become alcoholics later in their life. The second problem is marijuana. And in 2008, I had started this job in 2006, and in 2008 hardly anybody in Lake County kids was using marijuana. And we became a legal medical marijuana state in 1998. And starting in 2008, every year it's been ticking up, 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 usually, unlike in the figures this year. So that's why the order these are in is our number one problem is alcohol. And you look at the three pieces of data I look at and use the strongest are who's used alcohol in the past thirty days. And then the second one is the youth's perception of harm, either great or moderate. And then the third thing is how youth perceive their parents, whether they would approve or disapprove of them using it. So when you look at the data, in 2008, it started with eighth graders, forty percent of them had had a drink in the last thirty days. And then you see in 2010, it went down to twenty-four, 2012 it went back up to thirty-one percent. And I'm thrilled to see 2013 that it's seven percent in Lakeview. And these are only Lakeview data, it's not Lake County. You see in the next column, Lake County figures, then over to the right you see the state of Oregon. And then over to the far right is national. Some of the data, I can't find national data on it. When it comes to smoking tobacco, you see that, that I didn't have a national. But if you look at the data, we tend to be higher than the state of Oregon, we tend to be higher than the nation, which I think is concerning. When you look at the eleventh graders, in 2008, we were fifty-six percent of the students had said they had a drink in the past thirty days. Then it went down to forty-one percent, then it went back up to fifty-six percent, and in 2013 it's down to thirty-nine. And I'm thrilled to see that low of a figure compared to what we've been. The next page has the perception that youth have that just harm them drinking. And I remember a couple of years ago, there was somebody at an admin meeting that asked, they couldn't believe that the kids thought their parents would be more upset if they smoked tobacco than if they had a drink or used marijuana. And one of the things that I said is, think about it, I'm a lot older than a lot of you in this room. But when I grew up, pretty much most of the people in America were smoking or chewing tobacco or something like that. And today you don't see that. So the kids don't see adults smoking, so they think that's wrong. Yet in Lake County, it's very prevalent, there's usually a social hour at every function and a lot of drinking is going on in Lake County. It's kind of an accepted ritual, a part of the culture. So the kids think that's okay, their parents wouldn't be upset about it because their parents do. Same thing with marijuana, as it becomes a medicine, the kids don't think it's harmful. So you'll see how high the numbers, they used to be sixty-nine percent for eighth graders in 2008. And that unfortunately has tended to go up most years. I don't know what happened in 2012, if they thought their parents, that it would be harmful. And then it's back up to seventy-two percent for eighth graders. And then eleventh graders, sixty-one percent don't, they think it's harmful, eighty-four percent in 2010. And then in 2012 it was fifty-four percent, and in 2013 it's fifty-seven percent. We try to teach them, I know the health classes do information on it and try to walk with them. We work with, we try to bring speakers and things, we just had a guest speaker in that we opened up to the community parents at night. And I know there's at least one student here, but from the administration and teachers, we heard really good comments about the gentleman that came back to speak, Ray Lozano. And I think the kids like it because he talks about things that they care about. He seems to hit on information that they might pay a little bit more attention to than just typical textbook. And then the next question was youth perception of parent disapproval. In 2008, eighth graders, ninety-six percent thought their parents would not approve of them drinking. In 2010, it's down to ninety-two percent, 2012 it went down to eighty-three percent. We jumped back up a little in 2013. And then eleventh graders, ninety-five percent in 2008 thought their parents would not approve. In 2010, it went down to seventy-three percent, and 2012 it went back up to eighty-one. And this year, I'm thrilled that it's ninety-seven percent, because that's a really great figure. When you come to marijuana, you can see how the data, the stats up until this year, they were kind of going up every year. Marijuana use in eighth grade, it was two percent in '08, and then it was five percent. That had tried it in the last, used it in the last thirty days, and 2012 was nineteen percent. And then luckily, I'm thrilled that it's down to zero percent in 2013. And the eleventh grade, you can see that it was fourteen percent in 2008, and then twenty-nine percent in 2010. And then twenty-four percent, we went down a little in 2012, and I was thrilled to see eleven percent this year. The percent of youth who believe there's a moderate, great risk of using marijuana. In 2008, a hundred percent in eighth grade thought it was harmful. Then in 2010, it went down to sixty-eight percent thought it was harmful. And then 2012, it went up to eighty-one, and it's back down a little to seventy-six this year. Eleventh graders in 2008, it was ninety-five percent thought it was harmful. And then in 2010, it went down to forty-two percent, that bothered us a lot. And then 2012, it went up to ninety-two percent, and then in 2013 it's down again to sixty percent, which is better than the nineties. Then when we ask the students the percentage that their parents would believe it was wrong, in eighth grade in 2008, it was ninety-six percent of the students in eighth grade, in 2010 it was ninety-seven, in 2012 it was eighty-six percent. And this year, I'm thrilled that it's up to ninety-eight percent in eighth grade. Eleventh grade in 2008, it was ninety-eight percent, and in 2010 it went down to eighty-two percent. And it bounced back up to eighty-nine percent, and it continued up this year to ninety-seven percent. I include tobacco because I don't have grants or money that funds me for doing tobacco. But I always use tobacco as an example when I talk with kids. And I tell them to ask anybody who choose tobacco or smokes tobacco, are they glad they started? Because there's not a social perception that there's a problem if somebody smokes. A lot more today because most people don't smoke or do these things. But at least somebody who smokes or choose tobacco will express that they wish they'd never started. Unfortunately, someone who's an alcoholic or someone who's addicted to drugs, they're in denial themselves. And so they never admit that there's a problem or that they're not, you know, that they've got an issue. So I explain to the kids how addictive nicotine is, and I use tobacco as that example. And in eight years, I can tell you, I offer kids from elementary school through high school, if they know somebody that they asked, are they glad they started, to come see me and I'll give them money, and in eight years, no teenagers ever come and say, give me money. Here's the guy or a woman who says they're glad they started. So I use that as an analogy. The tobacco rates that I give you are smokeless because smoke, chewing tobacco is a bigger deal in Lake County than smoking cigarettes for our youth. And I think probably if you look around in Lake County, there's probably a lot more people, adults, chewing maybe than smoking these days. So I give you the data on smokeless, in eighth grade, they use chewing tobacco. And again, it's not tried it, it's used tobacco or used alcohol or used marijuana. These aren't people trying it for the first time, there's another question on those surveys about it. These are people who use it, okay? So, smokeless in 2008, in eighth grade, it was two percent, and then 2010 it was eight percent. In 2012, it was eight percent, and then in 2013 it went back down to two percent, so I'm thrilled. I apologize to you, the eleventh grade, 2008, that should not have been an N A, it's nineteen percent. So if you wanted to fill that in. I was working these figures, we've never done trends on just Lakeview, I usually talk about Lake County. And I was a little blind by the end of last week, and I noticed that today that I had let that slip.
How accurate is your data?
Our data is, just so that you know, most of the years it's every other year because it used to be an Oregon Healthy Teen Survey. And then the state of Oregon's prevention department totally started paying a loan just to do prevention, and it's called Student Wellness Survey. And then in 2013, the Oregon Healthy Teen came to two of our schools, Lakeview and Northlake, and asked would they like to participate free of charge. Usually the Oregon Healthy Teen, there's a cost associated with it, the state of Oregon prevention pays for the student wellness. They actually have epidemiologists that does, all these people do, is data, data, data and statistics. And they do it specifically for our function of prevention. And it's specifically around substance abuse. There's different epidemiologists that work for public health that do things like tobacco and other data like that. So these people, they've developed the questions with people, and they literally, they're anonymous surveys that the kids take. And there are questions that are seeded in so that if kids are, you know, just joking around and answering, you know, obliviously or, you know, trying to game the system, there are questions that are key to find it, and they throw them out and they don't count those surveys. So they're very accurate. People that do this for a living their whole career, this is what they do and this is what they develop. And the same thing for the national ones that we use, those surveys have each of the schools, and then they give E S D. And that's the ones I usually get access to without a superintendent's permission, is for Lake County. And then they also do Oregon, and then we go to, again, national, like the Center for Disease Control or the, I forget what NITE is, National Institute for Drug Abuse. We go to those kinds of things where it's monitoring the future, and it's very scientific surveys that do the same type of things that have it nationally. So the data that we give you is very responsible, science-based data. For smokeless tobacco, you can see that the use in thirty days is a little higher, like that nineteen percent that have used it. The smokeless, it's nineteen percent. When you go over to the next page, the tobacco, it's only nine percent. And for 2010, that had used it, eleventh graders, it was seventy-three percent in 2010, where it was only twenty percent of kids that were smoking cigarettes. And yet for smokeless, it had chewing, in 2012 it was eighty-one percent. And in 2012 for smoked tobacco, it was only fourteen percent in Lakeview. And then in 2013, seventy-three percent of the kids have said they've used smokeless, you know, chewed in the past thirty days. But yet cigarettes, it's only fourteen percent. And our, obviously, there's more higher numbers for smoking in the country and even in Oregon than there is for the chewed tobacco. When you ask the youth, the only way that we, that they ask, it's kind, you can tell it's kind of dictated by people over on the I-5 corridor. Because then when it comes to questions like the risk of harm and would your parents approve, they only ask about cigarettes. They don't ask about chew. So you can tell that it's driven more by the larger number cities. So when they ask about the risk of tobacco, it's specifically about cigarettes, and you can see that the kids, the kids I think understand the risk of cigarette smoking, I don't know that they understand the risk of chew. Or maybe it's because they see more people chewing, I'm not sure, it's, you know, it's an either or. And we, when we meet with the parent groups and stuff, and when we send out letters, we always try to reiterate that parents are the single largest influence in children's use of anything, whether it's alcohol, marijuana, any kind of drug, or tobacco. So unfortunately, a lot of what they see is kind of what they do. So again, the perceptions for harm from cigarettes, in 2008 it was ninety percent, in 2010 in eighth graders it went down to seventy-five, and went back up in 2012 to eighty, and in 2013 it creeped up again to eighty-six percent, which is good. Eleventh graders, 2008, it was eighty-eight percent thought it was harmful. And then in 2010 it went down to eighty-four, 2012 down to eighty-three, and in 2013 it's back up to ninety-five percent. And then I believe the last data is the tobacco with the parents disapprove, eighth graders, again, that's smoked tobacco. And it's, in eighth grade, it was ninety-eight percent thought their parents wouldn't approve, in 2010 it went down to ninety-four. And then twen, 2012 went to ninety, and 2013 it went back up to ninety-three. Eleventh grade for 2008 was a hundred percent thought their parents would disapprove, and 2010 it went down to ninety-three. 2012 it went back up to ninety-seven, and again in 2013 it's up to a hundred percent. The last thing that I added this year is gambling because the last maybe eighteen months, I've been doing gambling prevention as well. And it's an interesting stat that more middle school kids gamble than high school kids. And people don't think about gambling, but it is addictive, just like alcohol and drugs and tobacco. And it was through gambling that people started to realize that just like addiction is a brain switch that chemically actually happens in the brain, gambling is the exact same thing. And most of the things, you can see under each subject, I give you a little bit of information. But some of the biggest things that kids, and middle school kids especially, are gambling on, it's obviously they're not going into casinos or being allowed into casinos, but they do get to buy lottery tickets. Families even give their kids lottery tickets for Christmas and birthday gifts and stuff like that. But also they bet on their own skills, they bet on their teams. I was a little appalled in another school that when I was talking about gambling a month ago, that one of the kids was talking about how he lost thirty-four or fifty-four dollars on the Super Bowl, and I was like, oh my god. And then he bet another bet that like, so he ended up breaking even, but I thought, you know, how do I have this much money to bet? And when you look at the percentages of eighth graders who gambled in the past thirty days, in 2008 it was twenty-six percent of eighth graders, in 2010 it was forty-five percent of eighth graders, in 2012 it was forty-six percent of eighth graders. And in 2013, thank goodness, it's down to twenty-seven percent again. Eleventh graders, we didn't have the data on 2008 for gambling, but we had the forty percent for 2010 eleventh graders and forty-three percent in 2012, and in 2013 it was down to eleven percent. So we were pleased, and we just wanted you to see those figures because one of the other things that a lot of people aren't knowledgeable about, that I remember three years ago, the University of Nevada folks came up, their substance abuse and their treatment people. And they came up and were talking to our kids, and one of the teachers asked, is being on the computer and texting and video games, is that addictive? And yes, it is addictive. It does the same brain chemistry switch that any of the addictions do. And it's really changed addiction treatment in this country and the science that people in that field have learned over the last couple of years. So that's the other reason I wanted to share the gambling, because we don't have national or regional statistics on texting and video games. And I can see that that might end up being something that's included in surveys in the future because we'd like people to be aware of it. So thank you for putting info.
We appreciate you disseminating this information as a trend because it's a large report.
And I appreciate you, because you guys really, in your school district, in your administration, you really do talk about it and you do work about it, and just the way teachers have asked questions when we've had guest speakers over the years that I've worked with, yeah, I appreciate it. And I like to see, I'd like to see everybody in the school districts know about this.
So in prevention, do you use any of the Australian or New Zealand marijuana data?
Absolutely. Matter of fact, I forget if it's New Zealand, I'm pretty sure it was New Zealand was the first study that came out about the eight percent IQ drop. They monitored people for over thirty years that had used marijuana. And some of them had quit and some of them hadn't quit. And the especially, it's especially dangerous when they're young people starting with this because the human brain is not fully developed until someone's in their mid twenties. And the guy who was just speaking with us was a former stand-up comic and a treatment person, very knowledgeable, said, you know, when you're out in the backyard, do your parents ever yell, why did you do that? And you yell, I don't know. And it's because your brain hasn't fully developed when you're a teenager. And because that brain is not developed, those drugs and addictions are causing the brain chemistry to change, and it never goes back. And so the IQ points, literally an eight percent IQ, you guys are educators, I'm not, but, I mean, eight percent IQ drop is the difference between someone being a D student and they're flunking and they quit college, they quit school early. You know, it really is the difference. And never mind somebody being a C to a D student and then doesn't decide to go into college. So it's a, it's a big deal and we do use all that.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I hate to be sort of political, but I was, as everybody in my field was extremely upset when the President of the United States came out and said misinformation. He has all the national science data at his fingertips for years that marijuana is a lot more harmful than alcohol, and it's a lot more harmful than tobacco, and can't say it's a bad habit. You know, biting your nails is a bad habit, you know, using marijuana as a kid is not a bad habit. It's a health, it's a public health issue. So.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, people were really, and you better believe, all the kids heard that and they knew about that. It's just like when I go every month and they're asking you questions, oh, but, you know, and I teach them, when you Google it, here's the science, science. Don't listen to the, you know, the first three hundred pro marijuana advocates that have big money. They spend something like fifteen million dollars pro marijuana. And my field, nationally, we get to spend over the years like a million five, because we get hardly enough money to fund a person. And it's, it's that way everywhere around the country. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I L C.
Hey, Mr. Chair, what you see in front of you in the packet as well as at your place is a trifle handout on the I L C. And that's actually been a popular handout, it's been promoting the I L C, I L C is about. Also in your packet, you will see a brochure on the welding class that is starting very shortly. We met with K C C and decided to go ahead and just move forward with the welding program even though we're still working on the power upgrades to the hangar shop. We're still waiting for some figures from Pacific Power and things of that nature. We kind of knew that as we started with the welding program, we would see some pickups here and there, and kind of expected that. But we do have enough sort of class to go. I don't know if the sign up is as of today, but there is enough students for that. And K C C is sending an instructor over from class to the instructor course. Also, we have Jim Walls here tonight, and he's been making an announcement, an official announcement on a rate, so, Jim?
Yeah, thanks. I don't remember if it was two meetings ago I met with you. We were submitting the budget to the governor's office for a regional senior sheet stream of five hundred thousand for the I L C. The legislature passed that, I believe. Now, the deal is, is it will be a lot, a lot of bond sale, and that will happen in March 2015. And they expect the money to be available in May 2015. But that's for capital expenditures for the I L C over there. And I think the priorities were, in the budget I included the solar of a hundred thousand, but I did not include, we hadn't thought of it yet or hadn't got through it, that, you know, if we're going to have an auditorium, community auditorium upstairs, a chairlift isn't enough, so I had to throw in a, they'll give me an estimate of a hundred and thirty thousand for an elevator. So that went back into that budget when we were finalizing it from the governor's office. So I think the total budget then grew over to six hundred thousand. So there will be some priorities that need to be set between remodeling upstairs, which I think was about two hundred and twenty-five thousand estimate, a hundred and thirty thousand for the elevator. And then you can use that money for capital expenditure, and that could be the solar rate. Or it might be too, because K C C did not get that four, about four hundred and forty thousand for the on-time video delivery. When I analyzed why they didn't get that grant from the points that we received, it's because they didn't have a high match. So could you take fifty thousand for that equipment out of this budget and go get another four hundred some thousand for, yes, resubmit. I'll be talking to Dr. Gutierrez this week or next, I forget what week they're on right now, but this week or next, about, you know, opportunities to use this five hundred thousand to leverage a one. And then I'd also like to say with that news is I went and met with the Ford family and told them about the community opportunities with the upstairs. And they said, Jim, we want you to submit a proposal for all your furnishings up there, and don't be conservative. Now, I don't know yet, and I'll find out, the game you play, I don't know whether don't be conservative means fifty thousand or three hundred thousand. But we were getting a budget together with Sean and staff for the furnishings upstairs, which I think include the video equipment and stuff and the video drop down and auditorium or whatever, you know, we got to get through all that stuff and go after that. And that'll be in August, I need to have that in by August for them. So that was great news that they were that excited about this. So, so we got to five hundred, now the challenge is to use it to leverage as much as we can for other things for I L C. I think we're on a good roll, so I think it's a good opportunity.
So, I think it's important to kind of note that, you know, we have this ball rolling with Jim right now. And again, we need to finish formally in the I L C governance committee to advise the board because this five hundred thousand is going to the D M S facility for the I L C. And so what we're going to use that five hundred thousand for, I think the committee needs to meet and make recommendations work. It doesn't mean ongoing discussion, we have plenty of time because, again, like you said, the bonds will go on sale until March 2015. So we have plenty of time to decide how that five hundred thousand can be used. In the meantime, like you said, you're going to be trying to use this to leverage more dollars. And I heard some pretty big figures out of this gentleman's.
And stuff like, since the I L C is not an entity yet, that's one of the things that's got to get done. You know, so Ford family can't award a I L C. So I want to tell you, if it's a nonprofit, they need L C R I will run through, we don't take any admin. It'll go directly through the I L C. If that's what we have to do, if we haven't got that far. If I L C, let's say, should decide to be a nonprofit, that still takes time, lots of IRS. So it won't be here by the August. So we may have to do some of those things. They never told me where the five hundred thousand's going to. I'm assuming it's going to the school board unless there's some legislative thing that said otherwise. And I, I don't know that. All I know is it's guaranteed, got an email from the governor's office, it's in. Legislature would have to meet and vote again to take a bill out if they pass. That's going to happen. So we, you know, so it should be here in May. I did try and look into no interest or no interest loans with Jill Glenn. They would do that, one point seven five percent, but it'd take eighteen, eight months to get it. So I said, that doesn't make any sense for this, you know, it'll be at that date. But they did say, we want a grant application for the ILC. So we'll figure out what that is, too. This thing's rolling, it's really exciting. Okay, I hope you don't mind, I left for Ben yesterday, moved my sister Wal Wal, came to this meeting. I'm going home and crash. Hope you don't mind, Wally.
Thank you, Jim.
You know.
Would there be any objection if we moved the ASP report up?
That would be fine.
My call home. He's got some. Let's go ahead. Everybody's in agreement? Let's hear your report.
Well, we are now into our last quarter of the year, and everyone's getting super excited about that. Winter recognition assembly happened last month, and students were recognized for their academic achievements, athletics, and also good behavior. On March twentieth, the DMS and LHS band and choir had their spring concert in the LHS gym. It was a good show, and me turned out to like attend the concert, so the art classes also had some of their work displayed. Spring sports are going strong, and the field biology classes will be going on their annual field trip to the coast, April twenty-fifth through the twenty-eighth. The juniors and seniors will be going to a Shakespeare play in Ashland on Friday, May second. Prom is May third. The junior classes have been put in a lot of free time planning it, and I think they're doing a good job. The construction class is selling raffle tickets for a dining room table set. It was made out of reclaimed lumber from the DMS seismic retrofit project. Tickets can be purchased as, like at the LHS main office or from some of the students. They're twenty-five dollars each until Friday, May sixteenth. And there's only a two hundred tickets being sold. If anyone's interested, I'm selling some as well, so you can see me later on about that. Proms has went well last Wednesday and Thursday. And tomorrow, a few of the high school students will attend the high school OIT math competition. And the work force that are representing Lakeview High Schools is there, so that's all I have to look for.
Any questions?
What's the money for the raffle?
It's kind of just a fundraiser, as you can say, for the construction class, just to kind of support that. And I'm not particularly sure if it's just for the construction class or for some more of the other classes, but I just know it's going towards the school, so it's for a good cause.
Do you want to comment on it?
As far as I know, it's construction, for projects, materials, tools, areas of that nature.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, six point three, professional development grant.
Yes, Mr. Chair, what you should see in front of you is a memorandum of understanding and review between all of our school districts in Lake County that the ESD is brokering for us. There is two funding sources that were approved through the last legislative session. And there's some food improvement grants we actually did not have to pay for, and they just disseminated them according to EDM, according to the student population. And one is called Appeal to Your Rural Grant, and the other one is Professional Development Consortium. And we kind of wrote this MOU to be very, very flexible. As you can see, there's a lot of different areas we could be using these grant dollars for. The allocation for Lake County School District is a grand total of sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars. And some of these dollars will be shared between the school districts, like maybe we bring in a specialized trainer for teacher evaluation on our Senate Bill two ninety, and we have a joint meeting between districts, and we can share in that cost. But those dollars are also available for us to use, because that is school district, for a variety of purposes, anywhere from Senate Bill two ninety to common core state standards to math coaching, language arts, literacy coaching, et cetera. And so we wrote very general, so we could use it for a plethora of purposes. And this grant is good through the end of next year. And so we'll be meeting monthly with the other school districts to decide how these dollars are going to be utilized. I'll be working with our local admin team in terms of how we tap into those. So all I need is for the board to approve this MOU.
What's the ESD's indirect cost before the same?
ESD always charges an indirect cost for any kind of management, grants, or things of that nature. That's their standard fee. So what we're getting from this is we're getting the collaboration through the ESD, also they're managing the grant applications and all the paperwork, the reporting, which takes a huge load off of us. So that's basically what we're getting from that fee.
Why is it indirect cost? Seems to me like it's a direct cost to start doing the program.
Good question. I'm not sure why they call it indirect. I'm not sure if they're, Mike, do you know, is there a legal term of that, or?
No, the state uses the term indirect. Even if I was, we could claim indirect costs for managing, say Title I for the idea grant, but we don't, because we run out of money, and it's just better to pay the people who are working under those grants than to pay me, because then we're there anyway.
Yeah, that's... But aren't the people there anyway, and they get paid a hundred percent for a hundred percent of the year? So that's called a way to get more funds in the budget. Right? Yep.
Service fee is what it's...
It's a service fee. And I brought this up at ESD budget meetings before.
Are you one of the agencies that are real good at that?
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments, curations? Thinking a motion? I make the motion that we approve this memorandum of understanding with the Lake County Education Service District.
All right, the motion is made and seconded to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Lake County ESD. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We are at the construction class table proposal and discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, what you should see in front of you is a proposal through an email from DJ, and with a picture of that table that Michael was just talking about earlier, about wrapping off. And I've seen it in person, it's a very impressive piece of work. And he has enough material and lumber to complete a table that's about twelve to thirteen feet long. He would like the students to construct it and the table to be used in the boardroom. And it's just been another great way of celebrating the history of our district. And I said, well, I want to bring it before you guys, get your approval before you went ahead, and it worked. Steve, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I don't. I think they're excited to get started. It is quite a bit of history there, so.
I also wanted to keep it rough, so it's, you know, it's a rough sawn lumber product, and it's full dimension. And so, you know, it's not going to be like you sand it down, like, almost smooth, like new lumber. And so it can't be, it has that historical piece.
Will that have been near on it?
No. So it'd be kind of rough surface.
Might have to have a little writing pad or footboard or something. I think we ought to put a glass top on it.
We could do that. We could do that.
Could we make it in the shape of a horseshoe?
Make sure they check like you did.
That's a good point.
Probably maybe a plaque or something, where people come in here and know it.
Yeah.
And who built it?
It's a good idea.
Somewhere in that.
Yeah, it's great energy.
As long as they don't charge you indirect service fee.
That gives a break, three point five percent.
So do we need a motion to approve that they can do that, or is it just a, yeah, that you do?
I think it'd be good to make the motion and approve it.
All right.
So if it's thirteen feet long, will we all fit?
Well, that's kind of the idea. It would be, or it would be a horseshoe, you'd be side by side at the table.
Yeah, so on this end, see there's a spot on the end here, it'd be on the end. And there's somebody on the other end. And that's the motion.
So is there a motion to approve the table project? Aye, this one. All right, motion's been made and seconded to approve the proposal for the board table from shop class. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Someone can say it.
Good night, thanks.
Seven point one, written building reports.
Yes, Mr. Chair, building principals here to answer any questions, and these written reports also include sec. 11. I would point out the April events for LHS and DMS. You have a National Honor Society induction coming up, Senator Ron Wyden Town Hall, there's a Oregon college education function coming up, cultural night gathering place, it's going to talk to the event. Mr. Kabili, calendar.
The biggie, biggie, Jim Condon will on Saturday.
There you go.
Five o'clock, five o'clock.
Science fair.
Mrs. Warner, can you add on that?
Science fair. Well, the carnival?
Yep.
I don't know if my weird dinner's going out, if you'd like to come have dinner at the dessert kitchen, and we got some of this cake walk, and so find a four or five-year-old and bring one out, because there's lots of games here there each week. Come participate in the auction.
Make that mark with signs for it, yeah.
Science fair, April twenty-third, we'll have an open house that evening, like we usually do, and the kids from Union Gold, and the last couple of years, they've gone in and participated with the sixth graders and tenth. It's just kind of a precursor to their field trip, which is kind of nice, is spend the day together. Then those Union kids would do oral presentations as well with the judges.
That's a fantastic presentation. I'd be happy to have you come down, take a look.
And are we going to put them on on our April twentieth meeting? Come on on our April twentieth meeting? Sounds good.
Okay, great.
There's some we need at least to put in.
We had our ASP report, budget discussion and update.
Yes, Mr. Chair, what's included in your packet, I'm going to have Mr. Giddy kind of run through here. He's got a revenue sheet, and then he has a fund one hundred kind of summary sheet. I want the board to keep in mind that we're starting the budget process. And as I've been reminding people for a couple of months now, our wish list is mile long, our available revenue's only quarter mile long. And so, you know, I'm going to need a two million if we're really going to address our wish list, and we just don't, we're not going to have that. So there's going to have to be some decisions made throughout the process. Some of it has to do with personnel, which is board-only decisions, not budget committee decisions. Some will involve budget committee recommendations and board approvals. So I'm going to have Mr. Giddy kind of run through the revenue side, and then some highlights of the fund one hundred. And then I'll tell you at the end of his presentation, the things that we still kind of have on our list that haven't really made the budget yet, that certainly could be amended throughout the budget process. So, Mr. Giddy, you want to take them through the revenue?
Okay. Just to start off, what I handed out at the beginning of the, is your estimates, revenue and expenditures for this year.
Mike, did you have an all-year plan?
Okay. Several things happened. Last week, Emily Nance, and a big surprise to us, is that the State of Oregon had notified us that we're going to receive approximately three hundred and eleven thousand dollars more than what they've been telling us all year. And that's in the school support fund. That was a big surprise to us. We didn't know it was coming at all. Another factor that increased is predicted cash balance was that all year long, I've been using a hundred and twenty thousand dollars as an expense against the general fund for fund six hundred cent. It's the, well, that's where we do handle the HRA, the health reimbursement arrangement, and pay for retirees and stuff like that. But anyway, that dropped from a hundred and twenty thousand, twenty thousand, down to seventy-four thousand. So we picked up another forty-six thousand dollars there. So the outlook for our expenditures, just from those two items, we're looking at three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars more than what we thought we were going to get this year. That brings our predicted cash balance down to one million, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Now, keep in mind, that does not include the three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars in budgeted transfers of the funds, of the equipment reserve and cap carry and the maintenance reserve fund. Okay? Now, keep that one million, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars in your mind, and then we'll go to estimate number two. This is our estimate for next year's budget. Now, ignore the three columns under fiscal year thirteen, fourteen, because I have not had time to work that out yet. I did this last month, and I estimated that the beginning fund balance would be one million, two hundred and twenty-three thousand with the information I had at the time, first March. So we want to get the next two right columns, or actually last column with the amount center, underestimated budget fourteen, fifteen. You come down to the highlighted red number, that's our beginning fund balance, and that's what I'm predicting is going to be our beginning fund balance for next year is one million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. Now, there's, I had, I want to tell you, all our funds, now, when you go to the meeting, the rest of the meeting tomorrow, all our funds are budget, are balanced, everything, fund one hundred right on through. The thing, let's see, I'm turning together my thoughts here, because I don't have too much time on this. Okay, the one million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars contains a budget factor. I had to do that to balance fund one hundred. Now, if you remember that one million, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, now, if we make all three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars in transfers, that'll give me an any fund balance of one million, two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. Now, if you take that one million, two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars from what I predict to be one million, three hundred and forty-seven for the beginning fund balance, I'm a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars short. So the bottom line is, you've still got work ahead of you, and you've got decisions to make. Just because we're going to go to the meeting tomorrow night with a balanced budget, doesn't mean it's really truly balanced. You still have to consider what we're going to do this year as far as transfers, and what you want in your next year's budget, whether it's cuts, cuts this year in transfers, or cuts next year in what we've had budgeted so far. Now, if you look at the blue sheet here, this has your contingency and your unappropriability. this has your contingency and your unappropriated. Now, in the operating contingency, I have five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A hundred and fifty thousand of that is reserved for any negotiated... Where's the button? A hundred and fifty thousand of it is in reserve for any possible negotiations as far as salaries and benefits. Otherwise, I'd just put the four hundred thousand. And then four hundred thousand for reserve for next year, not appropriate. We didn't want to go in and falsify salaries throughout all the fund, and then have to make adjustments all over the place later on, depending on what the budget committee decides. And then in the final, is you have a white page and a yellow page. In fund one hundred's budget, which right now is technically balanced, I had built in four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars in transfers to other funds. You might say, this is reality. But what it should be is on the yellow page. This is what you need to, what's the word there? Secure the future, the buildings and transportation, all that kind of stuff in the future. And what we really need is six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in transfer. But I had to knock that down to four hundred and ninety-seven thousand. So we want you to think about that in our own eyes meeting. And like I said, it's not a slam dunk, even though the funds are all balanced, we still have a lot of work ahead of us.
So this is what you can live with, and this is what we really should, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, one, the reality, the other's the wish list, you might say. But the yellow page represents what we really should be doing.
It represents what we have done to maintain a balanced budget through this economic recession, as well as the sacrifices that we've made to keep programs going, employees employed. Even though we've had to cut, you know, the board's made a conscious decision this whole time to sacrifice a lot of the facilities and the transportation side. And so what Mike is saying, that six hundred and eight thousand figure is really what we should be looking at to build back, to try and start to make up for all those years of sacrifice that we've done on the facilities and transportation area. Now, like I said, after Mike's presentation, I'm going to kind of give you the list of items that haven't made the budget. There's a number of things that we are trying to monitor as we look at this. One is, we've been working hard to try and move forward with the district phone system upgrade. We've built an intercom system. As I've been sharing with you all along, we've had some serious delays in that project. We were not able to meet the E-rate submission deadline, and so that has not made the budget. Another one is, we feel that we're still way behind on district maintenance. We used to have three people, we're down to one and a half. We would certainly like to add another district maintenance person, but that is not in the budget. We know that we need to boost library services, particularly at the elementary level. But we're waiting until we get the certified librarian onboard through the ESD. And the ESD is currently negotiating to contract the certified librarian out of Denver, fine. And we're going to get like eighteen to twenty days of service out of that certified librarian. And we're waiting for that library to come onboard, so we can, they can make an analysis of our district library needs, and then make a recommendation on, yeah, I really feel like you need to go in this direction or that direction. We're not sure what that recommendation would be at this point, so we don't have anything reflected in the budget on that. There's a couple of options for adding staffing at Union Elementary that involve either classified and certified, or either or. And we have not put anything in the budget on that. We also know we're behind in terms of a certified staff position at the secondary level. We don't exactly have a subject area where that is, we just know it needs to be a versatile person. Am I correcting that, Steve, in terms of management and development? And we have not put that in the budget either, and so.
Classified or certified?
Certified, certified. And so, you know, there are a number of things that we're kind of monitoring and watching, and those just have not been reflected in the budget. Some of them are going to require a much more lengthy process before we even know where we need to go with it, such as the phone system. We got an initial recommendation from CenturyLink, though we still need to do a lot of work on our end to really drill down exactly what we need, turn it into a contract, negotiate that contract, and then bring the contract aboard for approval before we can even apply for E-rate ramblers. And so we still have a number of steps, probably at least three or four or five months worth of work on just that project alone. So, some of those things, I don't feel that we will be premature by putting it into the budget at this point. But they certainly are on the table, and we're still monitoring those things. Again, our wish list is mile long, and our available revenue, thank goodness we got that extra three hundred thousand. I mean, Mike and I, we had a little happy dance in his office the moment we learned that, because we were expecting to send the money back to the state, not receiving extra. And but the state is going through adjustments also, and a lot of that stuff, they didn't realize either, and so it was a pretty surprise to us. Anything else? No, I don't have any. So hopefully, we've kind of painted an overall budget picture for the board. There's a lot of steps and dominoes that still need to fall, and we need to go through with the budgeting process. Mike will be taking the budget committee through a lot more in detail. I'll have a PowerPoint presentation kind of outlining a lot of this, including more information for the budget committee tomorrow night. So I guess I can have a good feeling, a good picture here with the budget. And there's some, as you, as you look at some of those line items on those sheets in front of you, and kind of compare with what we budgeted this year, and what we're recommending for next year. In most cases, there's an increase, in some cases, there's a decrease. And those are all just kind of thankful words at this point, the best of magnetizability in terms of predicting what we really can live with within our current budget. But, that's kind of where we're at.
Great, can we have that by tomorrow?
Pardon me?
Can we have that by tomorrow?
Ah, it's a good idea. I think we will.
Any other questions? Alright, thanks for the overview, and kind of some ideas to have for tomorrow's meeting, it's always helpful.
Thanks.
Alright, OEIV.
Yes, Mr. Chair, what you see there is a letter from Dr. Nancy Gold in regards to achievement compacts, the Oregon Education Investment Board, OEIV, and its relation to the budgeting process. The last paragraph of that letter says, and I've highlighted in yellow there, says there's requirements stating in line, the Achievement Compact Advisory Committee provided recommendations to the board by May first. The committee has met the best we could, and, but I'll tell you right now, it's very premature. I'll have more of a detailed report to present to the board and the budget committee tomorrow as a part of the budgeting process. But, you know, we're still in the early parts of our assessment schedule. And so, we really don't have the data that we need to be able to put together a solid recommendation at this point. When the Legislative Assembly came out with the May first deadline, there was a lot of pushback, and they said, wait, wait, that's way too early. And so they said, okay, we'll redo it. Well, yeah, they redid it, but they forgot to take the May first day off, they kept it in there. But even though they changed the due date, it's now extended to October fifteenth. That's much more realistic, because by the time we finish assessment season, then we can, then look at that data and make some solid recommendations for the next year's achievement compacts. And we will be going through that. So at this point, it's kind of premature, but you'll see my recommendations and thoughts on that tomorrow, the best data that we have available to us at this particular point. Also, if you look at the next part of that handout, it says Achievement Compact Implementation. It's actually page two of that particular section, or page thirty-five at the bottom of the packet. It's the third paragraph down, highlighted in the yellow, it says the key outcomes. And here's what you really need to know about Achievement Compact. The key outcomes for K through twelve districts include third grade reading proficiency, fifth grade math proficiency, sixth grade prontic absenteeism, ninth grade on track, college credits earned in high school, high school completion, and post-secondary enrollment. And so those are the indicators that I'll be focusing on tomorrow, and I'll address in much greater detail tomorrow. But if you really want to know about Achievement Compacts, it's right there in one sentence. That's really what Achievement Compacts are about. And so feel free to read the rest of that handout on your own. It's really talking about initiatives of OEIV, what they're trying to do, what is the purpose of OEIV? What is the impact of local strategy and budget, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot more information there that you probably want to know, but it is there for your review and budget.
Why do they think it says prontic absenteeism?
You know, we have asked that a lot, and they keep pointing and saying, well, there's research out there that supports that. To this day, I don't believe we've found that research.
Google everything under the sun, try to find something, I'd find.
Yeah, so that is a very interesting one, and we're certainly asking for more further clarification on that. But that is one of the, of those indicators that did get negotiated at state level, and that was the outcome, so.
But there is, there is age when absenteeism kind of starts to be an issue, what kind of junior high, or I?
Well, absenteeism is an issue actually K through twelve.
Can be in any grade level. Any grade level.
Any grade level, there's a lot more focus on the early indicators also in K through three around.
Oh, okay.
About absenteeism. So it is a factor at whatever level. Like Pete asked, why is it sixth grade, why did they choose sixth grade, new question.
He says the block of my business is at Fremont, as far as absenteeism. K three, yeah. I think more with as far as monitoring attendance, and writing grunt letters at Fremont, and by far, the area. Old news, we took that off, consent agenda. Is there any consent agenda items to discuss? Second reading, secretary, secretary, child description, do we have to, we discussed that at our last. Are there any additions?
Yeah, I think we may have reviewed those additions, unless you want to take that again. Just review them last time, has any changes?
The only thing you guys wanted to talk about was that public inversion officer, but I think it generalizes enough in there that we can clarify the details set out of the job description, unless you want to include it. It's the only thing that we don't have, you guys have talked a lot about, and we don't have details set in that job description. It kind of just generalizes the idea of the POI piece of that. So unless you want to add to that, obviously, we didn't want any changes last time, so.
My biggest thing is just taking that off your plate and putting that somewhere else where it's a better use of a resource. And just one person that's going to control what comes and goes in the district.
And I think.
It's my only concern.
Yeah, I think this is the start of achieving that.
I vote we approve the consent agenda.
Motion's been made and seconded, they can approve the consent agenda as presented, all with a favor, say aye. Aye, aye, anyone opposed? Motion carries. New business, BLA Language Arts textbook adoption approval.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this is a big one. We have gone through a lengthy process according to board policy in terms of evaluating the upcoming adoption for English Language Arts. And we have staff here tonight to answer questions, if the board has them, on our recommendations. K through three, we're recommending Boot and Mythical Journeys, four through six, Congradal Wonders, and seven through twelve, Hope and Google Literature Series. We've looked at the continuum of how all these curriculums work together, and they do work good and quite nicely. There is some good transition plans in place, and we do have some samples of, I think, wonders and journeys behind you there. Right next to Rebecca, if you really wanted to look at that. The big part is price tag. And what we had originally anticipated to be ninety-two hundred thousand, and set aside a half of that for this year approximately, thinking it was good stewards, on track and everything, it grew exponentially. And so really, that is where, probably the biggest part of this decision tonight. The overall cost of the entire textbook adoption is about two hundred and twelve thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six. It's considerably more than what we had anticipated, around a hundred thousand overall. The cost of textbooks really took us by surprise, it risen considerably since the district's last, last adoption. You know, we were not anticipating that kind of an increase. We did look at, gee, what if we looked at a couple of options here? One was deferring a K through three adoption until fifteen, sixteen school year. That would save us around eighty-one thousand, and bring the total cost down about a hundred and thirty-one thousand. To tell you the truth, with the implementation of Common Core State Standards, also moving to the Starter Balance Assessment System, looking at our overall budget, I know I have a, I feel like I have a much better picture, at least Mike and I do, in terms of overall budget. I'm recommending that we just adopt the full K through twelve series, even though it's a price paying job. Mainly because of how important this adoption is. It's important to get the resources that the teachers need into the classroom, to do the work with those students, and work towards our meeting, our those, those who do instructional curriculum standards. This is something that the board can choose to approve tonight, wholeheartedly, or you can choose to approve with your program tonight, and per budgetary piece, until we start through the budget process, and we see a little bit more of where we're at with the budgeting. I think you heard Mr. Giddy tonight saying, gee, we need to put a bunch of money into our facilities and transportation, we're behind on that. Yeah, and it goes back to my comment earlier, our wish list is mile long, and our available revenue's only quarter mile long. So, but I feel this is, this is the essence of what we do. It's educate kids in the classroom, and that's what everything revolves around. And Language Arts, as we know, is one of the most important adoption that there is out there. If a student cannot read or converse appropriately at the right levels, it's really detrimental for that student's academic success in all of their subject areas. So.
See the textbook numbers here on seventeen, twelve, that I'm missing for you. I guess no question, there's adequate textbooks, nobody's going to be sharing the textbooks. There's adequate numbers.
We have eighty textbooks, grade seven through twelve.
Our biggest class is the seventh grade, and they have seventy-six. It's all my, I heard in the handout there, I'm budgeting seventy books appropriately for every kid, so I'm budgeting four. Plus supplemental materials into Title I, Special Education, and ELL, which are all part of the reading program.
Well, third grade reading proficiency is such a big deal, I think it's a bad idea to delay the K through three.
Okay, good news. Were all the textbooks about the same price?
Well, they varied across the levels.
I mean, to a huge degree, I mean, when you had the first ones to choose from, was there anything?
No.
They were all.
From grade level, grade level, I mean, Stephanie.
No, from program.
Oh, no, the publishers are pretty much aligning each other. They're competitive, and nobody's going to outsource or outcost the other person. They're competitive, and nobody's willing to outsource or outcost the other person, so.
When was our last adoption?
We haven't, well, high school has continued adoption, but we've, at the elementary level, we've deferred to science, and we've deferred, not deferred weight, to science, social studies adoptions, those are the big ones. The last time elementary adopted was mathematics in two thousand eight.
And a lot.
And when was the last time you did Language Arts through?
Language Arts through in two thousand seven.
Two seven.
Every seven years you do that.
So we. We're following the state-approved seven-year cycle.
So this would be a seven-year lesson.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've looked at materials, and we're very, I think I've got Susan and Katie here tonight. I had grade-level teams, and grade-level teams really rolled up their sleeves and want to work on these materials and everything. Would you like to talk maybe four, six, and you talk K three, I'm going to put you on the spot today. That's what you get for coming to the meeting.
Not going in.
Go ahead and talk K three and Journeys.
Well, we thought we, well, Mr. Kayle really wanted us to adopt the same series, K through six. There isn't a perfect fit, there's a huge difference between kindergarten and sixth grade. Kindergarten has a fabulous intervention program called Scott's Forgesman. So we thought maybe that's what we want to do, and Susan looked at it in the sixth grade, and Lisa looked at it in the sixth grade, and it wasn't, it wasn't adequate for sixth grade. So we went back to the drawing board, and Mr. Kayle gave us the options to meet with our grade levels. Or actually, we did, we came in this room, met with our grade levels, brought in the move from the English Language Arts Oregon Standards to the most important Common Core Standards, evaluated on that way, and we came back with K through three wanting Journeys, four, five, six wanting Wonders was kind of our top picks.
The thing with eighty Haye too, you know, what was, our big thing is, you know, eighty Haye's the bridging the gap. You gotta have Fremont lead into Haye, and then Haye with a good transition from Haye to the other middle school. So we sincerely look at that portion of the adoption too. What's going to fit as far as sixth grade up to DMS? And from our calculation, Wonders is about the best, back to the.
So we, so Mr. Kayle sent myself and our Title I teacher, Mrs. Gallagher, and Mrs. Tagg down here, because she's from, she's a fourth grade teacher, to look at the two. And Mrs. Tagg and I were, you know, she wanted Wonders, I wanted Journeys, and we could tell a huge difference between the two of them. We were flipping through, one of the things was writing about reading. The big push is nonfiction. So we were trying, you know, trying to find in the Wonders versus Journeys, well, where does yours talk about writing about reading? Well, it's nowhere in the Journeys, but it's really thick and heavy in the fourth grade series in Wonders. So there was huge differences, and so we took it back to Mr. Kayle and Mr. Gallagher went with us, and we explained the big differences between Wonders and Journeys, and they decided that it would be okay. We figured out how it could transfer from third to fourth, you know, that, what do you, K through three, four through six. And they use the same vocabulary as far as comprehension skills, comprehension strategies. And we thought it would be a great, an okay transition. And Mr. Gallagher and Mr. Kayle said that we could split it up, K three, four, six. Anything else?
Well, one of the problems that you run into is that no publisher makes a product for K twelve, and the majority of your schools, your elementary schools are K five. And because we chose to keep our sixth graders in a little more of a sheltered, protective environment for another year, give them growth and maturity, we run into this with all of our textbooks adoptions. Reading just is probably the largest. So you're going to have a break either K five and then six, you know, six on up, somewhere along there. And Mr. Kayle put together a team that felt very strongly that Wonders went into a lot of depth with nonfiction items and provided the depth to the curriculum to prepare those fourth, fifth, sixth graders to join that seventh grade curriculum and make on that level more so than Journeys did. And that's why we ended up with Wonders, because they spent a lot of time looking at it, because there was no perfect fit. So instead of forcing us into a curriculum that doesn't work best for our kids, we'd like to split the curriculum to make the best fit for our kids at their level, their developmental level.
And also, and I'll let Ruth Ann speak to this, we had, you know, communication between sixth grade teachers and Ruth Ann as far as, you know, the connection of Wonders to the seven, twelve adoption as well.
And the seven, twelve adoption was easy, we really only had two publishers that had seven through twelve. And so we, we just sat down in the English department and looked and just compared, you know, ninth grade books in each. And one was really good with the Common Core, it had the standards right there on the page for the teachers and the students to see. And so it really follows the line of where the Common Core is going. And, and the layout was better on the pages, and the information presented was better. Even in twelfth grade pictures are still important. And, you know, the one book that, the pages were totally way too full with, and I, we felt like the kids would be, you know, overstimulated, where do we look first? And that publisher didn't have as good a connection with the Common Core. And so really, it made our decision easy. We didn't have, maybe we should have, but we didn't have to spend a huge amount of time. We got more samples from different publishers, but our one, our one top criteria was we want to go seven through twelve. And then that immediately narrowed the field to just those two. And so it was, it was pretty easy to decide. And then in contact with the publisher, they were going to give us a whole bunch of free stuff. Ordering eighty textbooks, you know, at a hundred plus dollars, they can throw in a lot of free stuff. But a lot of it I actually turned down. Thank you, but no thank you, because storing, you know, four hundred and eighty workbooks of one kind, and then we'd have four hundred and eighty of two others in addition to that, I have no, the bookroom is not that big. And so I had to say no thank you to a lot of those things, so. And for us, one of the big things on our adoption is training, to get training with the new books, which, having been here for the last adoption, we didn't have that. And there's a lot of supplemental materials, you know, CDs that have tests already on them, and different activities already created. But if you don't know what's on that CD, you just go and make your own. It's faster than trying to figure it out, even if it's already there. And so if he has some training to show us, you know, what's there so that we can use what they've already done, we don't have to recreate the wheel, that would, that would be really helpful for us. That was a piece of our adoption.
Technology was big on ours too.
I kept trying to get him to throw in like a roving computer lab, iPads, class sets.
They wouldn't give you a free thing of that.
She didn't even acknowledge that I asked that, so, yeah, she didn't even say no.
The three, the three primary things, I sat them in your scoring rubers and everything, I was kind of mean. From all the rubers you guys.
For a while. It was good, it was nice for Kayla and I to be able to, you know, because I think we were both in the mindset of, you know, I couldn't figure out what they found so intriguing about Wonders, and they couldn't figure out what we found so different about, or intriguing about Journeys. But they're so different between kindergarten, their third and fourth through six, that I really think that's the best option for K through six is to be able to split the publishers up. Because Journeys isn't as strong, fourth through six, but Wonders also isn't as strong, K through three, so.
The two high schools, they're close in cost also?
I honestly, I don't even know, I didn't, I didn't ask the other one. It was a.
Very, very similar.
Yeah, so we behind. All of our choices were just.
The charge of my committee was seamless, seven through twelve with strong Common Core. And this one just blew the other one out.
Well, like I said, the three guiding principles of my committee were continuity from grade to grade to grade, huge. Correlation of Common Core, and of course you've heard me say RTI over and over and over again, what had the best fit to the RTI program? And I'll speak one last thing to Wonders. That was kind of a real selling point as far as Wonders goes, because it has a very strong RTI component as far as interventions at the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade levels. In our program, we're really reaching out, trying to find real good quality interventions. Mrs. Gallagher, I place a lot of faith in what she says, her reading specialist and everything, and she felt, and, you know, the Wonders curriculum serves that RTI intervention very well.
So it sounds like a lot of good work done.
Oh, yeah, thank you very much.
I'm very proud of my group, it's a great job.
I don't really have any.
If we were to adopt, would this be in the classroom or by student?
Yes.
Okay.
Don Peels, July, come in the buildings over the summer. They have fun in service week of going through all those boxes and going it all out.
It's kind of like Christmas sometimes.
Yeah. So our options are to approve, and then figure out where to go with the money.
Well, here's your options, again, the budget is filled with a lot of just placeholders. And Mike and I are saying, well, let me put this in, put that in, you know, not knowing where the discussions are going to go. So what's in the budget right now, as Mike pointed out earlier, which is a balanced budget, is, is the amount to cover the grades four through twelve adoption with deferring the K through three. That's not what I'm recommending. You know, and you're talking about we'd have to find eighty-one thousand, but I feel there's enough flexibility, especially with this latest three hundred thousand, I don't think that would be a problem. Especially when I look at priorities, this is essential for what we do.
I'd like to make a motion, we do full adoption of the English Language Arts textbook.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded to do the full adoption of the Language Arts ELLA, English Language Arts textbook adoption. All with the favor, say aye. Aye. Say anybody opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, thanks for all that work you guys did.
Yeah, they did a great job.
Lots to sort through.
They did. It's the same danger when we know the time to put in ahead of time. Yes. Thank you.
All right.
As I was curious, was it only because there were three different products that there was a, the split came from funds for K through three? Because there was a, it was, why wasn't there, if there wasn't enough money for the whole adoption, why wasn't the whole adoption reduced, all K through twelve?
We looked at that, and what's your response to that?
Well, we did like that, we were trying to do fudge factor share in there, I was just going to compromise many, many pieces of the quality of the adoption as far as getting books in every kid's hand, and curriculum, and workbooks, and software. So it just, you know, it just, from that standpoint, it just wasn't going to work out. It would affect the quality of the adoption, so.
And as a general colleague, it was good in terms of, gee, the four through twelve full implementation, you know, we felt was better than just doing a partial job, K through twelve, same thing. And so that's where that option came in, and, you know, we didn't exactly want to come up with any options, but at the time, we didn't know about the three hundred thousand. And so that was kind of the news for us, and that kind of deviated a lot of pressure.
Initially, I proposed that too, that's when we were looking at a very, you know, huge budget burden. I had a lot of conversation, once again, I was like, I sound like Gallagher, I'd say, well, if we were to defer adoption for a year, what's going to, I consider all the causing pain, but what's going to cause the least amount of pain? And she looked at as far as, you know, the implementation of Common Core and getting us towards that smarter balance test. She said, well, it's kind of where we can recommend anything, but probably, you know, K through three for a year. So that's when that plan kind of came up, so.
When's our next adoption?
Good question. I should have included that in here. Originally, the state came out with Language Arts and then Mathematics right after that. And they've since deferred the math to be in the classroom until fall of two thousand seventeen, which budgetary-wise is good news. Curriculum-wise, I'm really worried about, and so is the rest of the state. So what our next cycle is next year is the English Language Learners, and so that's going to be a fairly small adoption. That was another reason we were looking at the deferment, because it would, budgetary-wise, it would be much more palatable. And then after that, I think it's Science, and then it goes Mathematics. And Language Arts is going to come up in another seven years.
So how do you, how do you start toward the Common Core Standards without Common Core Standard books?
I've been asking that question all over the place. Yeah, I struggle with the state assessing our students' Common Core Mathematics, and then we don't have, or it's available for another three years. I really struggle with that. What?
A math book adoption earlier than what the state.
Problem is, there aren't any suppliers out there right now. Yeah?
Where do we get our material, are you guys just going to scratch around?
You scramble.
Yeah.
Thanks.
You get a lot of supplementary stuff.
Yeah.
You say, oh, this will hit this core, this is still, and it's not the most efficient.
No, it's not.
It's what you do, but your publishers won't come out with that until right before the adoption.
And the state has to approve the publications.
We can only pick things up. And so we can't pick anything until they approve us.
Yeah, so it's a really.
It really is, I mean, the state has to approve before we can consider anything.
So, so when you're really up to full, energy is really several years from now.
Yes.
That's the full energy.
Right, and the challenge is going to be in the interim of how do we transition to that?
Yeah.
So our performance will take its time. But it's on the horizon, we just turn people some dollars away for it. That's what we were talking about last week, this price tag, this price tag, and this is really education. It's really, this is how it works in math, which is going to be, you know.
Right, so I would say probably not this budget cycle, but the next one. I think we need to start pushing it all the way, yeah, sooner than later, and so we do have a lot more built up. So it's not such a big, maybe expensive, long budget cycle.
All right, sixth grade field trip, chaperone approval. I will defer this to Mrs. Warner.
The list is in the packet, and I'm here to answer any questions about the field trip discussion. You two guys, huh? Brett's a big, worldly guy, and he is, he is already seasoned in loading and loading the bus, because he's, no one will just load this.
Where's the other?
How many kids total have lost?
Fifty-five, so we're a smaller group than last year by about fifteen kids, we're quite a bit smaller, so.
I move to the chaperones.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the sixth grade field trip chaperone list as presented. All with the favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, you have your list of chaperones. Do you send the chaperones a little thank you note or something?
The children all write, and.
The children do?
The children all write, have it, thank you notes, each one of them to their chaperones. And then on our way, as we travel throughout the state, we have good pictures taken, and thank yous made ahead of time, so we drop them off and do them as we go through the state.
The trip is a zone.
Yeah.
It's wild. You don't agree?
Been around for a long time.
I kept waiting for them to go, and that kind of pee.
I'm just glad we have chaperones, and I do. Did you want chaperones? Did you want chaperones? No, I didn't mind.
Oh, yeah. You missed it.
Where's the chaperone when you do a call?
All right, confidential mechanic facilities operation coordinator, have hired?
Yes, Mr. Chair, it gives me with great pleasure to recommend Mr. John Roberts, you hired his position. He's had twenty-seven years as a certified mechanic, three years experience repairing school buses, former auto works business owner and operator, he's also ASE Master Mechanic Certification, and he's got Ford Senior Master Technician Certification, which less than one percent of all Ford technicians hold the certification nationwide. So he's got some really good qualities there. He's also State of Oregon Bus Inspector Certification, experienced from grounds to construction, electrical HVAC systems, and so I'm recommending him for hire.
construction, electrical, HVAC systems, and so I'm, I'm recommending him for hire, um, officially starting July first, but, uh, there's some trainings that we're wanting to send him to, uh, before July first, uh, for like any rate of pest management and asbestos and things of that nature.
Is level D in the middle or is that the top?
No, that's, that's, uh, right in the middle. Um, it was either C or D and it is, is certifications, I just felt that D would be better.
And it can go up to?
Yeah. Definitely.
Thanks Steph, you guys approved that salary schedule from the last meeting. And pardon, that's reversible, is that right?
Oh, yeah.
Or the bus mechanic piece.
Which isn't all of it.
We're. We're, we're designing it as fifty, fifty, fifty percent bus mechanic, fifty percent else, but we don't know exactly what it's gonna be until we get him going in the position.
Should've brought you the top page, this is what you guys approved last. For tomorrow. That's what, that's the one you guys approved, so it's, okay, this is that. Where's this amount? This is D.
We talked about, didn't we, how much we're supposed to do on mechanic services?
Yeah. I just didn't recognize the.
So we get to approve it?
But in bus, you guys.
How much do we approve the? The transportation and facilities operations coordinator as recommended by Mr. Howard?
Oh, second?
So the motion's been made and seconded to approve the transportation facilities operations coordinator as recommended. Any discussion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes, we have a new question.
Yes, we do.
Our next item is the confidential district assessment coordinator hired.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm recommending that Ms. Tare Count is hired for this, uh, the new district assessment coordinator position. Uh, we did a very lengthy search process, we had, uh, multiple interviews for this position, it was, uh, quite a field of candidates, and we went through two, excuse me, two levels of interviews and Ms. Tare Count was by far the one that emerged at the very top. Uh, it was the unanimous pick by the committee. And, uh, we're, to tell you the truth, I've already had Ms. Count start because our assessment season started about a week and a half ago, and so we really needed her to get on board with Tammy Johnson and, and learn about the, the, the new assessment system, cause we're doing both Oaks right now and the smart balance pilot. And so our, our kids are going through a lot of testing right now. It's just one of those tiny things.
I will also recommend the.
Motion for made and seconded to approve the hire, the right nomination for hire of the district assessment coordinator. Any discussion? Any who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item five, first reading of the OSBA proposed B P, January, March.
Yes, January, March, board policy updates. Uh, this is our first reading, so I do not recommend that we approve any of this tonight. To tell you the truth, it looks like a lot of policies, but if you read the summary section, they're very simple. And it's, it's quite explanatory, so please read that between now and the next board meeting if you have any questions. If you may call, the next meeting we'll go through this a little in depth and, uh, it shows standard stuff that's reflecting legislation that's in place.
All right, thank you. Announcement.
Yes, two announcements, uh, just a reminder, first budget meeting tomorrow, you'll be all anticipating. Um, it'll be, uh, seven o'clock PM at the high school library. And then we have an upcoming, uh, OSBA summer board conference, it's in Ben, July eighteenth through twentieth. If any of you are interested in participating with that, we can certainly sign you up now or that's a decision you can make later too. It's a really good conference.
Thank you. Any late items?
None for me, Mr. Chair.
Our next board meeting, are there any items we'd like to add to the agenda?
I have a quick question.
Quick question. Since our councilor's still here, all that data presented, I mean, we can look at the numbers, but what does that really tell us?
You know, what, what I think it tells us is that we're seeing definitely a decrease in use amongst our youth. I mean, I think that, you know, our alcohol use went down, our marijuana use went down. I don't really look at the gambling, Debbie does, but on those two things, I think that that showed us that the kids are seeing that they think their parents think it's harmful, so I think that's good and we saw it go down, and I think that that's really good, cause that's a trend we hadn't seen, we were kind of, you know. So, so I think all the prevention programs and our health classes and everything that we're doing, all the education in this community is helping our students really make better choices. So I was pleased with it. This is the, I would say this has been a really good year with those stats for, for our kids. Randy and I, well, I guess I proffered both of those last year, so I know the kids took it serious. Um, I can show you the piece of that, so I, you guys can see the whole survey, you have access to the whole survey, and it shows how, um, reliable it is. So, and it shows if they knocked out, if they threw out any tests or, or not, and we didn't have hardly any thrown out, so I think our kids took it extremely serious. So I feel good about it. I feel like it's, that they're, that they're hearing this, I think our staff's so supportive. I just think that, you know, our kids are learning, making better choices. You know, I think people worry about the legalization of marijuana, but I think our kids are, are seeing that there's, that there's that controversy and I hear them talk about that, so, so.
I think we had some concerns a few years ago and from some of the upward swings we're seeing and we, we looked at curriculum enhancing like our second steps curriculum and working with Debbie Utley with prevention stuff, and you know, I, I, I think this is the fruition of a few years of implementation and we're starting to see the payoff.
The other thing this survey said, cause there's several areas that said that they feel they have a trusting adult in our schools, I think that that, you know, kudos to our staff, because I think we're having those conversations in advisory or they're having them in their classes around different parts of curriculum. So, so I think that there's just a lot of good things going on in this district that are helping support that.
Thanks, thank you. Is there anything that we would like to get out of the next agenda? Okay. Well, with that, we will adjourn, uh, to take a short recess and reconvene in our executive session.
Thanks you guys for coming. Thank you.
Yeah.
Short one?